Study session to order, please, and we will begin with a flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Renee Lee, please do a roll call.
President Oshka.
President.
Vice President Cobb.
Here.
Director Winskill.
Here.
Director Heinz.
Here.
Director Viall.
Director Viall is excused. Next is the adoption of the agenda. May I have a motion?
I move adoption of the agenda for this evening.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to adopt the agenda. Are there any questions or comments from the board? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes four zero. Thank you. Item number five is business matters, five point one, contract acceptance for facilities condition assessment, FCA, and determination of educational adequacy report.
Yes. The interim chief operating officer, excuse me. The interim chief operating officer recommends that the board of directors authorize a superintendent or designated enter into an agreement with Cezanne Group for professional services to complete the facility's condition assessment in the amount of four hundred and twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five dollars, not including sales tax.
I'll move approval.
Second.
The motion's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Director Winskill.
Yeah, I didn't really have any back information on this. So what I understand, and maybe you can. So this group is looking at the facilities, and then the other group is facilitating the process.
The master planning, yes.
Okay. Oh, okay. And it looks like we're looking at all buildings, but do we need to look at all buildings?
Yes, so we, and forgive me for the exact time, maybe a month or two ago, we brought to the concept of doing a complete analysis of the district facilities, district wide. Because what we've learned in some of our previous, we didn't have the data that we needed to make the best decisions about the costs of some of the construction that was needed, some of the conditions that were needed. And so what this allows us to do is do a complete analysis of all the conditions of the facilities, and that will be used to plan future bonds and future levies for those conditions.
Well, that I, that part I understand, but.
With that said, there will be a level of analysis is less than in some of our newer buildings and more extensive in some of our older buildings.
So will we look back on the records to see, now, there are some schools I know that had heating systems fail within a few years of being built, others with roofs that have had some issues. So will we look at sort of a historical perspective?
We'll look at from the historical perspective and what we have today, and it'll help us with maintenance along the way as well.
Okay, thanks.
Director or Vice President Cobb.
I'm not sure if this is in the materials, but can you tell me the timeline for this? How long the assessment will take?
So the assessment will take about, about ten weeks, and then we'll have a report on that.
Other questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes four zero. Item number five point two, contract acceptance for development of a long-range facility's master plan.
Interim chief operating officer recommends the board of directors authorize a superintendent or designated enter into an agreement with Mailham Architects for professional services to complete the long-range facility master plan in the amount of three hundred and sixty-two thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars, not including sales tax.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Motion's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
How long is this process? Oh, I'm sorry.
Just with both of these, I just want to compliment the process. I appreciate that we had a couple of months ago, the, you front-loaded us about the thoughts on this. And then I liked last week getting the presentation and hearing the qualifications of the different businesses that submitted proposals and then giving us another week. In the past, sometimes it felt like we just got this and we had to make a huge decision in a short period of time, and I feel like you got the pacing right on this. So I appreciate that. You presented it, you gave us some time, and then you came back to us with this is how we want to award it, and you gave us some more time. So thank you for doing it that way.
Thank you. Director Winskill, did you have a comment?
Oh, just a timeline. I think I was in Denver for that presentation, so that's why.
Right, so this will be starting around May of this year, and this will go on to about May of 2018. But remember, this is a planning that'll take steering groups and prepares us for the bond.
Thank you.
At what point in this planning will we be talking about the community outreach that will be part of that committee building?
The community outreach will probably be around, and Mailham Group is the one who's done these things before, and hopefully. Let me ask Rob Swawski. When would the steering group start?
And it's not a fair question yet.
No, it's not. We don't have that exact date.
Okay, that's fine. All right.
Good to know.
All right, are there any other questions or comments from the board? All those in favor can indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes four oh. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Item number six is study session, and the first item is family engagement.
So tonight we have our wonderful partnership office leadership here to talk, to talk and to discuss and to do a little teaching of the work in the partnership office specifically around family engagement. And so you'll see four distinct learning targets that the staff will take you through. This is truly designed to be an interactive discussion. You can feel free to stop us at any point and discuss in there. And what we plan to do at the end is not only answer any questions, but give you time to discuss anything that you would like to amongst yourselves as board members. So without further ado, I'd like to have the staff go ahead and lead us away, Ms. Thomas.
Okay. Good evening, glad to be here. Good to talk about one of our favorite subjects, which is family engagement. And so we're excited to present to you and to engage in an interactive session, learn more about what you know and what you'd like to know about for our session. So we're going to go through our learning targets for our presentation. So we are going to take you through the goal of the presentation. We're clicking.
We're trying to click. It is not working.
You got to turn it on. Did you turn it on?
No, I did not. Thanks.
There we got it. All right. So tonight we're going to deepen our understanding of what family engagement is and its connection to student achievement. We're going to talk a little bit about the national trends. We try to stay abreast of what's going on nationally around family engagement, because it's one of those things like equity work never ends. There's always stuff that we're learning and finding out. We're also going to talk a little bit about TPS initiatives around family engagement, what we're doing, the activities to support, promote, and facilitate family engagement throughout the district. We got twenty minutes, so we tried to be as comprehensive as we could in that time. But we're doing a lot of great work, and we're going to talk to you about that. And then we picked up two data points out of the climate survey. As you know, the climate survey is administered every other year. It is about a twenty-seven question survey, and there are about nine questions that we look at as an office to kind of guide our work around family, community engagement, collaboration, diversity, and communication with parents. And so we pulled some of that out that we'll talk a little bit about. So the definition of family engagement, you will hear a lot of different definitions around family engagement, what it means. Our definition that we work with, I won't read it for you, but you have it there, is actually the research-based Harvard definition of family engagement. We can do a lot of our work based off of what we learned out of Dr. Karen Mapp's office, because her work is what the Department of Education uses to do family engagement work. So you hear us talk a lot about her work. And then the definition, what I really like about this definition is that it's very broad and expansive, and it talks about family engagement happening in and outside of school time, right? And so it's a broad definition. You will see later on in the year when we adopt some of the language that we are developing in community, our parent advisory council has kind of created their own definition of family engagement. So you'll see varying definitions of family engagement, but for our work, this is the definition that we use. There are contrasting approaches to family engagement. Historically, we have mentioned this before in previous presentations, public education is kind of looked at as a closed system, and so in the way that there, people have approached traditionally parent and family engagement has been really about activities. It has been kind of recipients of services, seeing that families and communities are recipients of services instead of partners, that we, that traditionally, historically, it's been about following the school's agenda, doing workshops and presenting information, and having school-to-parent communication, so getting information out to parents. That was kind of perceived as engagement. Nowadays, this shift is more relationship-based, so it's connecting with parents, families, and communities. It is also about engaging parents and families as leaders, having shared opportunities to make decisions, to really increase capacity in learning each other and learning from each other. Also, parents and community setting an agenda together. So it's not about a district perspective only. It's about taking into account perspective and experiences of our community to really meet needs. And then training for leadership opportunities. A lot of our family engagement often consists of professional development and educational opportunities for parents, because parents are really interested in getting more comfortable, supporting their students at home, and also bettering themselves. And so that's been one of the hooks that we've been able to utilize to bring parents into our buildings and into some of our activities. And also, a mutual exchange of power, and this is where you peel back the layers of the onion a little bit. Community and parents, they like to make decisions. They want to be informed. And so instead of us talking at or talking to parents, the way that we approach the work is more about let's, let's sit down and let's see if we can agree together. Let's collaborate and make some decisions together. So it is a mutual exchange of power, which is a cultural shift, and we know that shifts take time for both parties. So this is where you see a lot of community engagement moving or family engagement moving. Less apparent involvement, more apparent engagement, and so that's the shift in the contrasting approaches. The connection to academic achievement, we know that this is the priority for the school district, is really improving outcomes for kids. And we have decades of research that shows when families and parents are engaged in supporting student success, kids have better grades in school, they attend more regularly, and we know kids have to be at school in order to learn. There are fewer discipline issues in and outside of class. They're more likely to enroll in higher-level classes, A, B, and IB, when parents understand and know what that is. They're also more likely to graduate high school and go on to college. And they also have, they're more excited. They have a better perception of education and because it's something that's talked about and embraced at home. So when we can get parents to buy in and to, and most parents automatically buy in, but give them the language and that we're on the same page, it's very, very helpful to students, and we have the research that proves that.
So we are thrilled that we get to talk about fam.
May I ask just a quick clarifying question?
So I see parents on the last two slides.
Yeah.
But knowing that some of our kids don't live with their parents.
Yeah, family.
Family.
And semantically, how do we handle that? Do we, is it always referred to as parents? Or we talk about family or guardian or?
Yeah. Mostly for our materials, the stuff that goes out into the community, we do family, parent slash family engagement. Usually you'll see family, school, community partnerships, and so the language is often interchangeable, but we are cognizant of the fact that we do have young people that come from various contexts, so yes.
Thank you.
We'll be conscious of that.
Yes, thank you. So we're thrilled that we're talking about this today. It is a national trend that's happening. And so these are some of the trends. Districts are making strides to increase academic performance under the, under the umbrella of family engagement. And there's just, as Amanda was saying, that there is just a lot of research that links family, or yeah, family engagement with academics. So we see many districts making strides in academic performance, and what we understand from the research is a way to sustain those academic strides is through family engagement. So we talked a little bit about Karen Mapp. She is pretty much the person in, in the, in our country as well as in the world around family engagement. And so she's contracted often by the U.S. Department of Justice. She created the dual-capacity framework, which we'll see next. She has been contracted by Scholastic. So Amanda and I and several of the family liaisons attended a Scholastic event just last month. She was there, it was great. We got to sit down and talk to her about specific things in our district around family engagement. And then she also hosts the Summer Institute at Harvard. Amanda and I attended that two years ago and last year. What was great about this year was that Wilson, Stewart, McCarver, Bernie, Lyant, and Brown's Point were there as well, and they gave a workshop during the Administrators Institute. Thank you. And then in June, Amanda and I are attending the National Family and Community Engagement Conference in San Francisco, where Dr. Mapp will be there as well. So people do, from around the world, come and listen to her work, her research. So here we see the dual-capacity framework, and it kind of works its way down. Where you want to get to is the orange level, and there's the key bullets around this are building capacity on two sides. One side is building the capacity of schools to be able to effectively work with parents and see as a partnership in helping students achieve. And then building the capacity of families to help, to work with the schools to help with academic achievement. And the one thing that she really does emphasize is that if you do school-wide activities, that the activity is linked to learning. So one thing, one area that we're exploring is we're developing a partnership with curriculum and instruction, where we're building the capacity of teachers to be able to show parents how to do a read aloud. And so then, then the parents will be able to see that being modeled, and then they'll be able to practice that with their child so they can really, you know, engage a child in reading, because we all know that being able to read by third grade is critical for graduation.
Just before the team goes through, one of the things that I'm most proud of, and I believe that we truly have a premier partnership office in the nation, the expertise, the passion, and the work that's done on behalf of the children's. That's how they say it in a place that I was recently at, the children's. What's really critical about is using this framework as a basis, but translating that into language that we can use inside the living room, inside the classroom. And so I don't want it to be missed that this is, this is the framework that we're looking at, national work. We're examining our practices. We're building that. But it's being translated into a language and a framework that's understandable for the people of Tacoma. And that's really critical, and I think it's really helped us build trust. That's helped produce some of those increases in our student achievement have come through that trust in the work of the partnership office.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to get into some of the initiatives, strategies, and activities to support family engagement in Tacoma Public Schools, so. The next benchmark, now, we presented to you before, and we always focus on our four benchmarks. That drives all the work of the partnership office, and as you can see, number four is engage families and parents. And so the crux of, a lot of our work focuses on engagement, family and parent engagement. But the other benchmarks are there too. If you go to the next slide, you can see the work of our office. The triangles represent kind of intersections of the work. So each of those benchmarks that we mentioned, the four, all the work that we do in our office, it intersects. So family engagement is not a standalone. It's kind of integrated into a lot of what we do, even developing partnerships, MOUs. The nature of those partnerships and relationships often support family and community engagement in some of the community-based organizations that we work with, collective impact partnerships. We're engaged in many levels, many areas of the work of our office incorporates family engagement. So that's what that slide was about. Next. TPS family liaisons, we mentioned this to you last time when we gave an update to the board, that we now have thirteen liaisons in fourteen school buildings. And this is important for a couple of reasons, and we'll talk about that a little bit more when we get into the data piece. But we have been able to leverage having someone in the building to do more, I think, effective family engagement, because they are accessible at the building level. So we're doing partnership and engagement work kind of at the district level and sporadically in buildings, but when we have a staff person that's at the building to be able to build those relationships and make connections, it makes a world of difference. And so one of the things that we've instituted this last year was paint-to-learn, learn-to-paint nights with our partner KBTC, who had a grant to do some early learning work around STEM. And so we came up with the idea to host family paint nights, where it was free of charge. All they have to do is show up. We brought all the supplies, and KBTC kind of facilitates the paint lesson. Two, it's a good strategy for a couple of reasons. One reason is, again, it opens the school building up and invites community in. People feel comfortable going to school. We have had the lowest number of turnout, it was like sixty parents, and the highest number was a hundred and twenty-five, and we were at cap because we didn't have enough easels. And so that school had to facilitate another paint night. So it's been something that parents have been engaged in and excited about, and parents that didn't think that they would like it, like it, because it's an opportunity for them to bond with their child. So while we're connecting things to learning, because there is a STEM lesson, they talk about shapes, and little elementary students, you know, they have shapes and talk about shapes I've never even heard of. But it's really cool. We have a microphone. We go and talk to the parents, talk to the kids while they're doing the activity. But what's really nice about it is that we're able to deliver a message around attendance, so we get district information out. We're able to have staff folks in the room, us as administrators in the room, talking to parents, connecting with them, and it's just a great experience. Pierce County Library has heard of what we're doing, and they're looking at duplicating and starting to use that as a strategy for themselves to get people into the libraries. And so we've been on a couple of work groups that is, are using, looking at using this as a model. And so it's been awesome. We've had, like I said, sixty is the lowest, a hundred and twenty-five has been the cap. It's just been a great opportunity for us to come in and connect with parents and families. It's free of charge, and you would not believe how thankful parents are to have that opportunity. And when we talk about connecting these opportunities to learning, there's also the social, emotional learning that goes on. So when you have a father with their third grader, as well as their two-year-old, they're as a family doing an activity. So it's just been a really cool thing to be able to see. And so that's the family liaison. Oh, that's okay. Back up, I think. Okay. And then annually, you know, we all, we do our family and community learning academy. I have the programs from this year, so you can see the workshops that were offered. We always offer a session in at least one other language. We had a Spanish session this year. But we have basically sessions for parents to get new information, learn how to help their child at home. We have community members and parents help us design the day, what it looks like, what parents are interested in, and we bring our partners in to bring resources and tools. So we have not only vendor tables, but Tacoma Public Library did a session and helped people learn about all the online resources through the library that young people can use. So this is one of our family engagement strategies that's kind of a district-wide thing that we moved from region to region. We started off at McCarver. We were at Jason Lee. This year we were at Bernie, and we will move it again for next year. College tours for families, another engagement opportunity. This was the first year that we opened up the college tours for middle schoolers, so middle school to high school, and we did have middle schoolers sitting in UW classrooms asking questions. We have parents bringing their, their young people to tour UWT, UPS, Clover parts, and Bates. And again, it's another opportunity that parents are really excited about. We know that college admissions information changes from year to year, so we have people that repeat the college tours just to get the information. But we are having conversations with parents on that bus ride about it never being too early to start planning for college. So you have a middle schooler, you know, in there with high school students. It's been really fun to watch. But that's something that we've also done as a strategy for family engagement. And this is probably on record, the first selfie that you guys have ever seen at a board study. You're welcome. This is the Parent Advisory Council. Those are some members of the Parent Advisory Council, and I think there's two staff folks there. But the Parent Advisory Council, one of our fabulous partners, Graduate Tacoma, established an independent group of parents to come and look at family and community, or family engagement in Tacoma. And so we're working together. That team has now grown. We have six parents, one Spanish-speaking parent who's very passionate about her community, and we're so excited to be working with her. And so we have a pack of six individuals, parents, all Tacoma Public School parents, that are working on a couple of different initiatives with us in partnership with our office. And so this group is, has helped me and helped the district look at our Title I policy. And so we've been able to revise the policy. You said, somebody said something earlier about, it was Josh, taking the language of policy and making it translatable so parents can connect and engage to it. So as you could imagine, when you sit down with a group of parents and you give them Title I policy and our district family engagement policy, they tore it apart. What does this really mean? And so I said, it was a great opportunity for us to come up with that language together. This is what this means. How would you say it? And so that's what we're in the process of doing now. They did their first session at the superintendent's breakfast to get feedback on the work that they've done around the policy. They had their first family event tonight, so they've taken some things out of the policy that they thought were most important, created a survey, and are now talking to other parents about what they think about the policy. So again, this is parent-driven decision-making, policy development that we're engaging our parents in. And while they're doing that, they're also recruiting other parents to join them and get involved and engage in doing the work of family engagement for our district. And so we're working on the district policy. Oh, exciting. They have, they're in the works. They're developing a toolkit for parents. And so they want to be able to create something that parents can use to help them support their child. And so they have a toolkit that's in development, and that's exciting, and I can't wait to share that. So that'll be something that they will have done or will be, will have produced by the end of the year. And again, it's nothing that the district said, we want you to do, except for the policy, because I did bring that to them. But out of that discussion came other things, and it was their ideas and they're leading that work. So I'm excited about that, and I probably talked way too long, but I'm super excited about our group of parents that's engaged in this work, so.
So we spoke in February. We gave a lot of information about attendance, and just to recap, this was research-based. It was vetted by parents. It was vetted by community members who asked us to turn the attendance message into a positive one. We used statistics to show parents the link between good attendance, being able to read by third grade, and that link to graduation. So we know that if students can read by third grade, they have a ninety-six percent chance of graduating. We think that's important for parents to know. And we're wanting to go deeper with attendance, so we're in the primary conversations, and we think this will tie in nicely with Tacoma Whole Child Initiative, of getting out to, you know, where do parents go? Where do families go? And finding out which barbershop do you go to, which stores? And having them come on as partners to create these messages of, we care about your child too. We, we want to hear about how is attendance going? And so really wrapping many people around our students just like Tacoma Whole Child and getting, so families can receive the message more than just from us. And, you know, we're going to continue our partnership with Graduate Tacoma, KBTC, and many more partners. So it wasn't enough, you know, about the nudge letters. We sent five thousand out each in October, December, and March. Another five thousand's going to go out at the end of the year. And what we've heard from buildings is that it has just created fantastic opportunities to have conversations with parents around attendance, because many parents don't know how absences affect academics. They don't know that excused absences affect student achievement, so that great opportunity. But it wasn't enough for our office just to help do the attendance letters in partnership with the district offices here, especially Student Information Services, or Student Information. No, not PIO, yes, but Sandra's department, and I'm blanking here. Student Information's, information? I'm too nervous right now. Anyway.
The one on the first floor.
Yes, the one on the first floor. Thank you. So it wasn't enough for us to just send out the nudge letters. We wanted to give schools tools to hand to the parents. So there's, the magnet is on the top, which you talked about in February, and also the resource sheet that has, you know, information about when is my child too sick to attend school. And we're going to be developing more tools, talking to schools, and finding out what they need.
Although this project was definitely a team project and a community-wide efforts, it should be noted that Merrily really was our champion behind the scenes, and not only with her thoughts and designs, but continuing to push it forward, and every time there was a roadblock, okay, what if we came about it this way? And so a lot of, at the surface level, this engagement strategy could be seen as, well, we're just pushing information. But it's really truly designed to give people information that they can use to engage and make decisions for their families, both in this dual capacity, both at the school side in a non-threatening way as well as a family side. So big kudos to Merrily for her leadership in this project. It's truly changed the way that we look at attendance.
Thank you. So then more tools as we, you know, we, we want to help our families who are struggling with attendance. So, you know, there's the book flicks through the pathway. So you know, there's the Book Flix through the Pathway Partnership with Tacoma Public Library, Book Flix's interactive book titles where children learn how to read, um, as, because they're being read to. And then Help Now, which is um, one-on-one tutoring online, um, seven days a week from three to ten o'clock.
So these are just some other tools and resources that we provide out of our office and work with um, other departments as well as um, disseminate the information um, via um, the Summer Principals Institute to administrators. Uh, these are resources that we make available. Um, the Language Line, which is Telephonic Interpretation Service, um, we negotiated a really good price for that. Um, and I think it was Kevin Akita, um, that um, had utilized that first. And so that was something that we were able to um, expand uh, knowledge about and use of throughout the district. Um, Welcoming Environment Checklist, a Title I Parent Compact. Some of this, um, the tools and the information that you see listed here is information that we gather when we go out to some of these conferences. We bring back and it is good stuff and, and folks utilize it and we make sure that we share it um, um, when we're presenting and working with our other colleagues. Uh, this summer, we're excited to be doing some um, professional development around family engagement at the Whole Educator uh, Summer Institute. And so we always have a few components or sessions at the Principal Summer Institute. But we're excited about the opportunity to get in front of teachers, um, because they are a critical link in that family engagement um, circle of love. So we're excited about that.
Yeah, we are trying to get, um, spread the word about Language Line to our schools. There's over two hundred languages available and you, they can get an interpreter on the phone within a minute. So, um, that would be great. So we um, wanted to know what's going on with family engagement in the rest of the district. So there is a, a quick uh, bullet points of all the different departments and what they're doing around family engagement.
So this is the climate survey. And like I said, we pulled out two um, data points to take a look at in the climate survey. Um, the way that the climate survey is set up, you know, we had a new um, um, uh, climate survey that was administered last year. Um, and so we had that data and we've been looking through that data and we're gonna talk about that a little bit. Um, but we crosswalked the old survey with the new survey, so we could do some comparisons around communication, around the um, engagement and around um, diversity. And so there is some alignment. So what's interesting here that we want, kinda wanted to focus on is the participa- participation rates in the climate survey. As you can see, um, it, it goes up and down. Um, it's been declining over the last couple of years, the participation rates in the survey. And we were hoping that when we redesigned the new survey and we uh, decreased the number of questions, that we would have more participation. But what's interesting is, I've been working with SJ in her office and uh, my colleagues in the collaborating around uh, benchmarks team. We've been, I've been looking at this data and we have an exciting session coming up next week because we're going to kind of dig a little deeper into the data. At a district level, things are looking good as far as communication, engagement and diversity. We're pretty much status quo, it doesn't really change very much um, th- uh, from year to year, um, as, as far as that data. Um, what also happens from year to year is that uh, participation rates, as you can see, are declining in some of the subgroups. Um, but scientifically, according to SJ, um, you want to have about thirteen percent um, of, uh, uh, participation rate is a, is a thirteen per- it, you need to, it needs to be at the thirteen to fourteen percent threshold to have some v- validity. And again, from a district level, we have valid data and we can use that data. Where it gets tricky is when you look by school, by school, at these numbers and participation rate. We, we have less than fourteen percent at many of our schools. So the work that needs to be done around this particular survey and talking to parents and hearing their vo- voices is at the school level. And so that's what the collaborating te- the collaborating about benchmark teams next week is actually gonna be taking a look at as, uh, and those are all the directors, um, um, the, the director-level staff are gonna be, uh, we have a, um, I think it's a quarterly thing where we get together and um, examine and analyze a piece of data. That's what we're all gonna be looking at next week. And we're going to look at it as a problem of practice. And everybody is going to play a role in helping me to develop some strategies around, how do we affect change at the building level to get these numbers increased? And what are some of the messages that we can develop to again, get people to participate in the survey and also identify themselves? Because the subgroup identification is purely voluntary. And so we need to have, develop a message that gets people motivated to say, I want my voice heard, you know, I took the survey and I'm speaking on behalf of my community. And so those are the things that we're going to be strategizing around, so that this um, data uh, means something at a building level, not just a district level.
So this is the same data that we showed in February. And so blue is almost, this is under the engagement category. So this combined questions around engagement and this is um, the, the results. So blue is almost never true and orange is almost always true. So you can see, it starts at two thousand twelve to thirteen and then it moves to two thousand fifteen, sixteen. And so it dropped a little bit, um, the orange bar, almost always true, dropped a little bit. Um, but then it rose seven percent over the last three years from thirty-nine percent to forty-six percent. So that's, that's good news. So that concludes our presentation, are there questions that you have for us?
Or for each other.
Director Heinz?
Thank you. Uh, on slide fourteen on the TPS Family Liaisons, would you remind me how those thirteen schools were identified to have liaisons in them?
Yes, um, we'd made, last year I think it was, two years ago. Um, we, we looked at our administrative support staff for our elementary schools. And we looked at what is the, what should be the new kind of uh, opportunities for um, support for schools. Some of the changes were to ensure that every school had a full-time counselor. That was not something we had in the past. Uh, and then we, we use an equity model when we allocate resources in the Tacoma Public Schools. That says, um, based on a variety of factors, for introduced lunch rates, uh, size of your school, special ed population, English language learners, a variety of indicators are just, uh, the way we dis- uh, disaggregate data. Uh, we come up with a, a formula that says, uh, based on these factors, schools uh, should have additional resources and support. Um, from there, we uh, offered schools and we said, um, you have several different options for this support. Um, you can add additional counseling support. Uh, we said, you could add a social worker potentially for support based on your needs, family liaisons. And there was one other one, I'll get it to you.
Social worker?
Yeah, social worker.
Um, and from there, schools started to make some decisions. And we put some, began the framework of starting to say, so what does a family liaison do? What does a social worker do? We had some job descriptions, those are evolving under the new context of the work that we do. These schools chose those. Some other schools, and you'll see some secondaries, they had opportunities to use Title I dollars. And so now we're starting to see, um, well, we won't know with the current funding and what is at danger of how long we will be able to support some of these concepts. But our dream would be is, is uh, to have family liaisons in every building. Uh, because that's where the trust and the relationships are established. Uh, but we have a ways to go. Our, our intent is not to move away from this model, but to be innovative and creative and, and continue it further. So that's kind of an extended answer, I apologize.
And ha- do we have desired outcomes?
For the family liaisons?
Yeah, that, that we're looking for in terms of academic performance, attendance?
Yeah, so we had actually, uh, maybe in December, Amanda, we had a great meeting with the family liaisons around this. And uh, we, we were, we were talking about what are the desired outcomes. And uh, Amanda was very clear and said, well, we have these outcomes in the partnership office that will be our desired outcomes. And those outcomes are linked to the district strategic plan goals and those are our outcomes. And so, family liaisons are working to um, to build action plans around the relevant benchmarks at the district level in both the partnership office as well as some of the academic sides.
And are they intended to just be in elementary schools or are you looking at middle school and high school?
We have some different models where they already, already, uh, Lincoln High School has a family liaison. Now, the, the work looks a little differently, uh, and it does, it would, should look a little differently based on the team approach at each of the schools. So this isn't a cookie cutter approach. But uh, at least my dream would be is, is that there would be, and I think it's safe to say Amanda's dream as well, that there would be a family liaison in every building.
Um, thank you. On slide, I have just three more questions, just to calibrate everybody's expectations. I promised not to go on and on, but I'm very um, interested in the work that's being done. On slide seventeen, uh, when you talked about taking district policy and then having the parental group uh, help us plain-talk it.
Mm-hmm.
Could we engage that group before we formally adopt policy? And maybe we could create policy from the beginning that's a little more user-friendly? And then think about, cause I know a lot of times when you, it just seems to me that we create it and then we're translating it. It could be valuable to get input prior to and semantically and also impact of that policy. If we're engaging families before we implement it, they may be able to steer us away from pitfalls that we hadn't even considered that we then have to deal with after the policy has been implemented.
Yeah, I, I think that they would love that. Um, we had to give them something to start with and we do have a current parent involvement ca- um, policy. So, um, the work that they were tasked with was making that come alive, making it mean something. But yes, I think doing it at the front end would be wise and they would love to be engaged.
And just uh, on the name, so we, I had asked a question earlier about family and I see it peppered throughout the document. Was there any thought giving to, given to the Family Advisory Council?
Well, they chose that name.
Okay.
Yeah, they chose that name that was um, the, a Graduate Tacoma decision, uh, for the Parent Advisory Council. And perhaps because they are all um, parents, um, and I don't know if that was something that the parents came up with or Graduate Tacoma, but that's, that's, that was the name they chose.
Yeah, I just wanna make certain we continue to be inclusive in that idea of, of family and who the caregiver is, relative or not, that they value and they've got a, a place to offer input.
Yes.
And people that might otherwise, well, I'm not a parent, I'm not eligible to be a part of this.
We can take that back to them and suggest that. One of the things that Amanda's and Merrily have done a good job of is this, knowing that they are a small shop business, they can't do all the work. And so this is a prime example where we're partnering with the community, and rightfully so, to, to work smarter um, as well as to make sure that our efforts are aligned. And so, I, I think it's very appropriate that we, we bring that suggestion back.
And then, uh, last question, just on the climate survey. I've been, as long as I've been on the board, th- this is always, I feel like there's a lot of weight put on the climate survey itself.
Mm-hmm.
And, and I don't know that we've ever quite gotten the survey itself right and then the implementation of the survey. And I don't know, is like with the PIO office as part of the communication, then helping people understand the relevance of their participation? Like, why should I do it? Why does it matter?
Mm-hmm.
And how do we demonstrate action taken as a result of participation? So it's, yeah, I'm just gonna fill it out, they're gonna do whatever they wanna do.
Right.
You know, that, that sort of a mindset versus how we have, you know, and I see this as, cause everything now is a vignette in my head. The way that you guys produce those is, is, let's explain to people, let's have a quick, here, hey, I'm taking the climate survey. And then, and then, oh, this is what the district does with it and this is how they vet the responses and this is how they follow up on the responses. And this, oh, look at this policy or this process or this purchase drove out of my participation. And then, uh, I think you start to build more people interested in taking it. Cause I, I mean, I take it and I don't even know then what my fee, I feel better. It's like when I vote, I'm like, I participated, but I don't really know how to assess what my participation, did it matter?
Mm-hmm.
Me- aside from feeling good that I took some sort of action. So if we can think about how we might better engage people on that survey.
Yeah. Thank you, that's good. Um, also for me to take to our meeting next week in the Collaborating About Benchmarks when we unpack this a little bit. Um, because I think you're right, um, showing people the evidence or, you know, the results of their participation is important. Um, yeah, I agree with you. I agree with you and I, and to let you know, we do collect other data around, you know, our work, what we're doing. We um, do exit um, surveys, we, um, when we have our Family Community Learning Academy, we have, um, them evaluate the session. So we get other pieces of feedback, but this is our, that climate survey.
Who do you administer the exit survey to?
Um, participants. So when we have the superintendent's breakfast or we have an event, there's always a, a feedback loop. So how did you like it, what would you like to see more of? And we've actually gotten a lot of good information from that, been able to change up, um, the way that we do business. Even the um, change in the format of the superintendent's uh, breakfast came from feedback from the parents that we'd like to see a little something different and we changed it up and it's been well-received.
And I like that concept of exit interviews. I was thinking about both students and parents as they leave the district. To say, okay, you've gone through your thirteen years or however long you were in the district. What worked well and what would you change for future parents and future family members and future students? And get that in real time. And it seems like as we're collecting Vanny and we, we, we have this interaction with these kids and families before they leave school. It'd be interesting to, and conversely, kids that drop out, if we can engage them and, you know, what was it that? What, could we have done anything better? And sometimes I know it's just circumstance. But for us to be in that, that learning mindset and, and that I think then builds, it demonstrates that we value people's opinions. So you've gotten through the system and we wanna know what worked well and what could we get better at? So we're in this continuous improvement loop.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Okay, so I, yeah, I'd, I'd like to see feedback on the climate survey to the uh, schools, you know, a little one-pager. And here's what you've said. Um, I just wanna say how I appreciate the scope of work. I mean, this is amazing, h- how many things you do and how much you keep adding and how we didn't have this program about five years ago or so. Uh, just amazing, all the work you do.
Thank you.
Um, and the only thing I would say is, are we careful about the parent engagement people? That they're the right people in the buildings? And um, we get feedback from the parents to make sure they are helpful and, you know, change them up if that's not possible.
Thank you.
I would hope that that would be something we would do.
Do we notice?
Got it.
I had a follow-up question on climate survey too. It's, it's, I think similar to, to Director's Heinz, but I can't talk either today.
Sorry.
I'm just joking, I don't mean to blame you for my. So what kind of support do buildings get to improve climate? And maybe that's a question on both sides of the room. And related to that, what's acceptable and unacceptable? I imagine that for a lot of the responses, folks are like average to good. But what's our threshold for um, like intervening? Like, we see this in the outcomes of your survey and really this has to change. Like, how do we make, how do we analyze that data and make sense of it? What's our process? And what's the?
I think they want you to check your microphone.
Do I need to repeat that?
No, well, yeah, go ahead, I guess they need to.
My question is about the climate survey and I'm wondering what kind of support buildings get to improve their performance on the climate surveys? And then how do we make sense of the outcomes of that data, especially when the uh, data point might not look so good? And what's our threshold for um, items that need more immediate um, intervention? And how do, how do we, what's our internal process for making sense of those outcomes?
That is a great question and that's actually what's happening next week. And so I've got, been, been able to take the data um, to my colleagues and we're unpacking it. The thing about the um, the data um, findings at the school level, you really can't make any inferences based on the number of participants. So if you have low participants, you can't really say, cause you didn't meet that threshold, right? And so we're looking at, um, what we're gonna be looking at next week is the schools that have great participation. Go talk to them and find out, what did you do that was different that, you know, other schools can implement? And so we're working together to develop those strategies. And the cool thing about it, what I'm really excited about, is that we have some time to unpack this data because the um, so- climate survey doesn't get administered again until year after next. So it's every, you know, two years. And so we have a good bulk of time to be able to get a campaign together, to get some strategies and really do a push so that the next time we come before you with some climate survey, we'll be able to say, look, these are the efforts that we put in place and these are our numbers hap- now and these are the schools that met the threshold. And so I'm hoping to have, um, and I expect to have a, good data to report um, the next time. But yeah, that's exactly what we're looking at, is building by building.
Then, oh, go ahead.
Just, I think the climate survey and traditionally in public schools is a clunky in itself. It's, uh, there's, there's a lot of different things in there and there's, part of that's for requirements for federal and state and uh, pieces in there. And so schools have traditionally struggled with making meaning of that data and, and there's not an overall composite score. And then adding to the, the, the level of complexity of participation. Um, some of the things that we do do and we work with is, is this continuous improvement cycle in part of their title and lap, school improvement plans uh, in the, in the STAR. Uh, in the, in the STAR school improvement plans, there's this opportunity to say, what does engagement look like? Factions of the climate survey, but not the holistic pieces. In the Tacoma Whole Child Initiative, there's, uh, teacher perceptions, there's staff perceptions, there's parent perceptions, there's student perceptions. And so that data that may not fall in the climate survey is used through the TIPS, the Team Initiative Problem Solving Process. So teams are action planning, trying to increase those, uh, perceptual pieces. Um, there's a lot of work to be done and, and the fortunate, unfortunate side is that there's not a lot of support that comes with some of this. Um, there's not a expertise in necessarily how to digest it or build those action plans. Um, this is part of the evolution of the family liaisons as well. And so, not only putting, we, we gotta be cautious about putting all of our eggs in the basket of the climate survey. Um, but ask ourselves, so that is important. You made a decision a couple of years ago to say, well, let's try to increase the participation to get some more valid results. And let's not pepper people with all these different surveys, different year after year. Um, but I guess what I'm trying to say to you is we have, we know we have more work to do in building climate and culture. Um, the most relevant and important work and happens right at the building level.
Thank you. Okay, um, uh, related to that, but you don't have to really answer this, but is, I think it relates to Director Heinz's comments. So it's more of a comment about getting families messages about what will happen as a result of their participation. And maybe sometimes we don't know that ahead of time, about if we are able to pro- provide additional support or some additional flexibility, I don't know, on either end, based on the outcomes of the results, but getting, trying to package some messages about why it matters. Then my other question is about the language line. When did that start or when did we, um, folks get access to language line?
To, let's see, last year. So the Equity Office is now very interested in working with us to increase the number of schools participating in that. It's fifty cents a minute.
Can we track use? I mean, eh, obviously, cause you pay, we pay per minute, but can we track use down to like the building level?
Um, I can, I think we can. I'll ask language line.
Okay, that'd be interesting, or not interesting, that's not the right word, but think useful information. And then my last question is about the college chores. What's the colleges' response been? How engaged and supportive of those chores have our colleges been?
They, um, have been great. Um, they expect it every year. Um, the first year we did it, Pierce College wasn't in the lineup. They called and said, put us in the lineup. Um, and so, they, they appreciate it. They have, um, you know, people coming and touring all the time. But, um, they've kind of made it a part of their annual, you know, they know that families are coming in. So, um, they're with us. They've been great to work with and very easy.
It's the only one on the west coast that I'm aware of. And, um, and I would say that not, I've received feedback that not only is it, that they love it, um, it's really important for them to be a partner in the work. Um, and they lead the show. It's not us saying, here's what you need to do and things. So we're, we're just the bus drivers. We're the signer-uppers, we're the promoters, it's their show. And so it's really, they take a tremendous amount of pride in saying, this is, these are beautiful campuses and our assets. And it's a way to also foster that this is Tacoma Pierce County, you don't have to leave this region to get a world-class education. And, uh, so it's, it's been a, I think, a huge success. We've learned along the way, like, we started by putting them all in one week and that was a long week for Amanda.
It was a long week.
But, and we've learned from that and we will continue to adapt and grow, but I, I highly encourage us to continue to maintain it.
And one of the cool things that I've seen that, um, some of the, uh, TCC and some of the technical colleges, um, that, I've been so impressed by their programs, uh, that not only have kids been inspired to kind of like investigate, maybe Vulcan Tech where they might not have before. Parents have investigated Vulcan Tech because they've gotten information that, you know, they wouldn't have otherwise got if they weren't, uh, with their, with their kid. And so, that's been really cool too, talking about parents about going back to school and it's never too late. I was an adult and, you know, I went back to school as an adult with older children. So being able to share, um, and encourage folks to, it's never too late and, and never too early.
That's great, thank you.
Great. You know, I, I work at a college and they actually will recruit high schools and middle schools to come visit them so that we are proactively going to all of our, uh, institutions of higher learning. Um, I imagine they would embrace with very open arms, cause it makes their job easier, cause of course, every college wants to spread their message. Um, I have my own list of questions as well. I wanna hop back to the whole attendance and the, the nudge to get people to class. It didn't just start dialogues in schools, it started dialogues across the community. I mean, I heard it on the news, I heard, had people stop me in King County and say, hey, TPS is doing this thing. How come you're calling all your students? You think that's really gonna make a difference? And I was like, well, cheap way to find out, right? Um, so that was really cool, because it really got a, a, a larger conversation going about what it means, what school means and every minute counts.
So we got some pushback around that too and I received that. And I guess I think one of the things that I'm most proud of is, shouldn't we be doing that no matter what? Right? Shouldn't we be, not that it's gonna make the end-all, be-all difference causation of change, but, um, it was, it was fun to be able to say, that's part of our responsibility to keep parents informed. Um, and not say that it's the school's fault that they're not coming to school. Nobody was saying that. Um, it's something that we have to resolve as a community. So I, I appreciate that, that not only the low cost, but just the opportunity to say, why, why wouldn't we do this?
Right, and it was the above and beyond, the nightly call that says so-and-so missed period two.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that gives you some more comprehensive information as a parent. And it also says to the broader community that Tacoma cares about their kids and whether or not they're gonna graduate school. And it's, and it's newsworthy to talk about that care. That's cool. Um, uh, so, then I'm looking at what your report and it sounds like it's a, is it something that you're gonna do quarterly? Um, it sounds like you did it in the fall and then you did it again in the winter. Is the intent that you'll do it every se- I'm sorry, I'm coming from a quarterly college environment. Ah, I'm not at work. Other hat. Is it something that you're gonna do every semester?
Yeah, um, every quarter. So it went out October, December, March, and then at the end of the year. And then we're also thinking about, um, doing nudge letters at, before school starts next year. We're exploring that idea so that they know how many absences they missed the previous year. So they're ready to go, hopefully, or in, well-informed for the beginning of next year. Because statistically, they show that if you can get good attendance going in September, it follows all the way to June.
So I guess my thought about it, the, all the letters, right, is, is will it, will it stop having an impact? And I guess that's not a question we can answer yet, but I would look forward, whether or not it becomes routine to parents, like, oh, there's my nudge letter. Right?
Oh, I see.
They're not even gonna pay attention, because I already know and I've harassed my child and that's all I can do. Um, and I'm sure that, that's not really the attitude that any of us parents have ever come at our kids, but, um, so, uh, I just wanted to keep that in mind, sorry. Uh, the second thing that I wanted to mention is, again, the language line. So, uh, Vice President Cobb also talked about this. I would, did not, I, I was not aware of this whatsoever. Um, and so, I think it's a really cool thing to be able to tell people about. So my understanding is that they can call and there's how many different languages?
About two hundred, but the schools have to sign up with language line and get an account to get that going.
Is there any place online that says which schools have it and which ones?
I have the list.
Is it, well, so if you're a parent in Tacoma, listening to this, how would you know if you had, well, actually, if you didn't speak English, you wouldn't know we were having this conversation?
Well, so the schools that have it, so I sent out, um, these, um, boards that you put on the front counter of your school. And it says in all these different languages, we have an interpreter, a telephonic interpreters.
Okay.
And so it's all these different languages and, yeah, that's how parents would know, at those schools.
Okay. It would just be a, a, an interesting thing to be able to educate people on in the community and stuff, because people aren't necessarily in those places, right?
So we'll work on, um, uh, the intent there was to pilot, to see if it was, it was attractive, which schools use it, would communities send. So we can work on, um, the expansion and communication plan for it, the language line.
Yeah, absolutely. And I get that it's not there yet, that's fine. I just think it's really an amazing thing. Uh, so, in talking about the climate survey responses and the way that parent engagement goes, let me see what the name of this slide is. Because unlike Director Heinz, I was not able to get the numbers. Um, it was regarding the kinds of engagement that different levels of school have. And something that kind of flagged me is that for middle and high schools, the sorts of, um, engagement is disciplinary engagement. And you know, that's not so much fun. And I know that, I still remember that when my kids went from grade school to middle school, there was almost a sense like, we don't really want parents to be engaged because now you're supposed to let go and let your parent, your kids be independent. There's probably some truth to that, um, depending on what kind of a parent you are. But can you talk to me a little bit more about how you received that response, if I'm misinterpreting it? What we can do to make sure that we keep families involved in a fun way throughout middle school and high school?
So, I, I think that, um, if you look nationally at the trend, there is a drop-off in parent engagement as a child gets older. Um, I think one of the things that we are, um, one of our strategies around focusing on early college and career awareness is that if we start with that conversation and those engagement strategies at an elementary level, we can sustain that engagement all the way through middle school and to high school. And so it's really looking at ways to keep parents engaged. Um, if you look at who's doing family engagement really well, um, Head Start, um, uh, elementary, um, their systems are set up to, to, for there to be more engagement. So I think for our office, our hook, um, to continue this continuum really is around early college and career exposure and awareness. And so that's our approach to developing ways to, um, keep parent, parents engaged. Um, we have a summer college depot that we do in partnership with the Tacoma Public Library. Um, it is a, um, six-week, um, they changed the model up this year, so I think it's gonna be a week-long experience. But all of the activities that we do, whether they be at the elementary, middle school level, all have a, a, a parent engagement component. Um, when we work with our other colleagues that are doing work around, um, the summer, um, the summer camps and programs, there's always an element of parent engagement. So we're, we're always at the table, we're always looking for new ways to keep parent engagement going as kids get older. But I think for our office, we've gotten some traction around the early college and career.
And I just wanna advocate that this list is not an exhaustive list and not the focus. So this is about surveys, uh, and some of the surveys that have come out. So at the middle schools and the high schools, the bus tours, for example, are secondary parent engagement at the colleges. Equity and Eco, the CRT and language lines are at the secondary schools as well. And so, I wouldn't want those folks at homes to just think that the only parent engagement that we're working on is discipline and re-engagement. But we have made some significant strides in engaging families in discipline and re-engagement, uh, practices that have been changing from years past and recent years. And so that's part of the reason why the team listed it there.
Mm-hmm. It, it's very important, it's very important that we are doing that and the ways that we've been doing discipline has been transformative as well. Um, I just, uh, and I, I very much appreciate that clarification of the other items. I just think that middle school and high school are such important times to do it, particularly, uh, as any middle school parent knows, that's when your student doesn't really want you to kiss them at the door anymore either. So, uh, it's challenging on both levels, so.
And I would just encourage every parent, like I told my son this morning, get over here and give him a kiss.
Exactly.
And, and as a recovering high school parent, uh, principal, not parent yet, principal, I would tell you that please become more engaged with your child, starting in high school. Ask the weeks, ask the conversations, ask them who they're dating, ask them the conversations as much as you possibly can. Look them in the eyes, that's the most critical time, is in high school.
And can I just say as well, all the work that's happening around the Tacoma Whole Child and social emotional learning, I think there's also another hook there to keep parents engaged, um, in, in, to keep, keep parents engaged with their kids as they grow. I think sometimes parents don't often have the tools or the language. Um, I'm a recovering parent of a teenager. Um, and so, the, all the support and help that you can get, um, is meaningful. And I think through the TWCI, we'll see some more, um, strategies around that.
Excellent, excellent. Uh, then moving on to my next question on the very last slide. Um, it was that we have an increase in it's almost always true. And I wanna know, what's almost always true?
Oh, the question. Um, the engagement question. So these are the engagement questions, let me take a look at here.
So are they just all questions about, did you participate in X, Y, or B?
So there's three, um, I think in the area of engagement, there are three questions that get to engagement. So we didn't call those out, but they are all engagement questions. So, are you engaged, um, are you, yeah, I can get that information for you.
That's okay, I just, general, general answer is good. I was just looking at it and wondering if I was missing a line or if, yeah. So that's, that's good to know, fantastic.
That's the category.
And lastly, but absolutely not least at all, is, um, just appreciation for your office and the work that both of you do.
Thank you.
Um, partnerships have become a norm for Tacoma Public Schools, largely because of your work. And it changes communities' response to everything that we do and the way that they see themselves frequently. Because I just hear people talk about, you know, they just spontaneously come up with what they could do with Tacoma Public Schools to improve community overall and they get excited about it. So, your excitement about it and all the work that you do is just so worthwhile and I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you. And we appreciate you, we appreciate, um, Josh and Carla and the board for being so supportive of the work. When we have activities, we see you guys there and it means a lot to have your participation. And just to know that you're, you've got our backs and that we're all in this together, but you've really given us the liberty to do the work that we're doing and, and we love it. So, thank you.
Thank you very much and, uh, staff, thank Ms. Talana Penn, who's not here, is, is a strong force in the partnership, partnership office. And so, uh, we would not want to, uh, forget a night with the recognizing her efforts as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other board questions, please?
I have a comment based on your comments about engagement of middle and high school parents. There are some really neat things that happen in our middle and high schools. Especially, uh, the high schools around the students and their achievements. Some athletic, some in the arts, some, um, ac- pure academic. But I don't know that families are always, um, um, coordinated around or, um, brought together around those events. I know they're there supporting and as individuals, but whether or not they have a network of families they're supporting. Or if those networks are, um, faci- fostered or facilitated, um, is the thing I have a question about. I think it probably happens in some places and doesn't happen in others. But it seems like there are some really easy, natural points of, of, of opportunities to bring families together, which would also help with the collective, keeping an eye on everybody's children in high school that you need. So, I don't know, I was just thinking of easy wins, but some of those really, um, great opportunities for students where their individual parents are out there.
Yeah.
Um, if we could bring them together and sort of use, galvanize their support as a group, that would be really.
That's a good idea. We, um, noted that and I, I love the idea of, um, mobilizing people around something positive and fun. That's a great way to get them in the door and build those connections, so, got it?
On behalf of the staff, we want to thank you too. It's, I mean, oftentimes it's, you don't see the, what the policy impacts. Uh, just looking at some of the benchmark data just the other day, for seventy percent of the juniors and seniors are taking one, uh, rigorous course. Uh, that comes through your policy decision around academic acceleration. Uh, academic acceleration is the parent has to up the child out. They are engaged in making the decision. That is a form of parent engagement. It may not be the same as going to an event, but there's a choice. Your desires to develop portfolio options and choices across the district are opportunities for parents to engage in the work. In the what work? Raising their children. We're a partner in that. And so, policy drives action, so thank you.
Great, thank you.
Great, thanks.
All right, any other questions or comments from the board? Thank you all very much for a fabulous, uh, study session. And with that, without saying no further business, I will adjourn this study session.